All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sacks?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings for December 7th, 2020 and December 21st, 2020. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make that motion then.
And I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis and seconded by Bill Colebrook. Are there any corrections?
I didn't see it.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Next up is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions tonight? All right, seeing none. Public input and presentations. We don't have any presentations listed. Are there presentations on the docket? No, all right, well, so go ahead and start with public input. At this time, would you please raise your hand either by using the button on the left, sorry, the bottom right corner, or using star nine if you've called in? All right, first up is Christopher Hansen.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, Christopher Hansen, Urbana. One quick correction to something the mayor said at the previous meeting. She spoke about the Illinois Attorney General making a determination that the Urbana Council had not violated the Open Meetings Act in a particular instance. One, I think one of those was mine. I'm not sure if the other one was my complaint. The determination that the IG came to was actually that they were unable to come to a conclusion, which is different than determining that there was no violation. So just a clarification there. And I thought I maybe did the council, I don't know, I don't know if any of you have actually ever tried to submit a PAC request for review on FOIA or OMA. I'm guessing not. Well, I'll give you an example of one that I submitted almost a year ago. It was against the Urbana Civil Service Commission. So the Urbana Civil Service Commission has a regular meeting schedule, right? Just like every board and commission is supposed to have, every public body. But they had not been meeting on their regular, regular meeting schedule for something like almost a year. They kept calling special meetings or rescheduling meetings, and they always had a habit of rescheduling them something like two days before the meeting time. So if you were planning to say, attend a civil service commission meeting at a certain time, say next month or two weeks from now, you would suddenly be surprised to find that it was canceled and then rescheduled for a week earlier and you'd missed it. In addition to that, the civil service commission was meeting on the second floor of the Urbana City Building behind a locked door. Now I submitted a complaint about this, and the Illinois Attorney General determined that there was no violation. So, and the reason, I think, was because there was a technical problem in my complaint because I didn't cite specific meeting dates or something to that effect. I just made a general complaint about all of their meetings. So I want the council to be aware, and maybe you can try this process out for yourself, aware how difficult it is to approach this process and how, how hard it can be to actually get any meaningful determination of the Illinois Attorney General. So, by the way, when you go back to in-person meetings, I suggest that the civil service commission not hold their meetings behind a locked door on the second floor of the city building. Let's see. Oh, last week, or last meeting, I asked about the one-door steering committee. I asked if it was a public body and open and subject to the OMA, and I still haven't gotten an answer to that. And I'm wondering, the steering committee, are there meeting videos and can the public view those? I'd also like to bring up the issue of Carol Mitten throwing out a Human Relations Commission public hearing determination and, and the city's posture that the city itself is free to violate its own human rights laws. And I wonder what the council thinks about that. And maybe these are the kinds of things that you can discuss on this new agenda item where you'll, you'll each be kind of free to bring up issues that, that the mayor doesn't want to talk about. And speaking of issues the mayor doesn't want to talk about, I always find it interesting how you pick and choose what things you're going to tell the public. So you found it convenient to tell the public that there were two OMA complaints where, as you claim, no violation. When are we going to talk about the half dozen or dozen determination letters from the Illinois Attorney General that said Urbana was violating FOIA? I sent that to the entire council. I sent it to all of you. I wrote articles on that. You have access to those letters. I, I explained them clearly. When are we going to talk about all those? When are we going to talk about the lawsuit, the FOIA lawsuit you just lost? You have another FOIA lawsuit now that you're dealing with. You're going to lose that one too. So it's going to keep going until we actually have honest conversations about these things. So I hope to hear about those issues from you. Thanks.
All right, right now I have no other hands that are raised. I'll give it a couple more seconds. Okay, now we're getting some. Meg McDonald?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Meg McDonald, again, Word five. I wasn't going to speak because I obviously went through my points pretty coherently last meeting. But now I'm a little angry, a little upset if what Christopher Hansen said is true, and I don't see how he has any reason to lie. I'm not somebody who comes into these meetings and talks about FOIA requests or OMA violations. I care about them. It's not something I really am going to spend my time talking about. But the mayor, if you're coming in here saying that there was no, two no violations to the OMA instead of saying that they couldn't come to a conclusion, that's very different. It's a very different way of spinning that. And that makes me upset because it reminds me of the Aliyah Lewis situation and how you told everyone there were shots fired into an apartment, and that was not true. And now Aliyah Lewis is still dealing with court cases in January, and she was brutalized by the police in April. And you really, you can't come to these meetings and present facts the way you want to and not how they actually happened. And it's really upsetting that this is what we have for leadership right now. Please stop doing this and please be more transparent about what happens in our community and why you're doing what you're doing. And also, all the police issues that we've brought up in 2020. And the only thing that we've gotten meaningful responses back to are traffic stops and jaywalking. While there are people being beat up and killed by the police officers in Champaign, Urbana. That's not hyperbole. Those are facts. People have been killed by police officers in both Champaign and Urbana. But we're talking about jaywalking, which is fine because there are racial biases there too. Good. There's only been one citation given in three years. Great. Let's talk about something else. And let's not spin the facts to make ourselves look better. Let's just own up to our mistakes. Say, I messed up. I'm not completely, you know, comfortable or familiar with all getting an influx of FOIA and OMA violations. Just say that. Just say, I'm not comfortable. I'm not used to this. Instead of trying, oh God, it's so frustrating. I'm just going to end now. But if you see my point of how it's related of how the mayor lied about the Aliyah Lewis situation, and now she's lying now, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
Diane, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would. First of all, shots were fired in the Aliyah Lewis incident. A bullet went through the window of a nearby apartment lodged in the wall. A woman was occupying that apartment at the time the bullet entered the window. That is a fact. Secondly, the judgments of the Attorney General were that the city of Urbana did not violate the Open Meetings Act, and they closed those cases. That is a fact. Third, the various FOIAs, we have vastly improved the FOIA process over the past six months. The city had a process in place. It wasn't equipped to handle the huge increase in the volume of the FOIAs and the size of the FOIA requests. So it took a while to get geared up, but we have a decent process in place, and we're doing much better than we did before. The lawsuit regarding a FOIA, we've asked the judge for clarification, and as soon as we have clarification on that, we will report that to the council. We will be bringing information about the Human Relations Commission and the results of the informal hearing. It was not a hearing of the commission. It was an informal hearing body, and we'll be clarifying all that within the next couple of weeks. We just have to pull the information together and make sure that we have a report that we can bring. So we will be bringing information on that. But yes, the Aliyah Lewis incident started with calls for service related to a shooting in South Urbana. Bullet went through the window of an apartment lodged in the wall, could have killed the occupant who lived there. And I will bring next week's statistics regarding the fact that Urbana police officers have not killed anyone in at least the last 25 years, probably before. There have only been one officer involved shooting in the last 25 years. So I would appreciate people bringing facts to public input. Thank you.
All right, next person up is Grace Wilkum.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Grace Wilkum. I'm an Urbana resident of Word six. There's a lot of heated things to follow. But as far as racial issues with policing, while I do think that, you know, statistics and data and accurate information is important, it seems like it was a diversion tactic in the last meeting, you know, 30 minutes ago, of diverting the issue of clarifying about a statistic on jaywalking tickets. Yet no action on the statistic that, I tried to look it up. I don't have it, but it was around, if not almost or more than 90% of child arrests in Urbana that have been black children as of the last statistic that I heard in 2020. And there's other statistics and testimony of racial issues and discrepancies in our police system. It doesn't have to be a heinous murder to get to that point, and I hope that it doesn't again. But these things do happen. It's happened in Champaign. It's our same sister community. It's not to say that it won't. So I think there are serious issues that we need to address, and it's diverting the issue. And I would suggest and ask that you please put your efforts towards addressing these issues rather than correcting, in fact, checking the public on specific data. I think it's the same thing with the Aliyah Lewis case, saying that a bullet going through the wall, even if that, you know, may have happened, that doesn't justify abuse from officers on an unarmed civilian who was just upset. And so I think we can argue the details, however, but there are major issues that aren't being addressed, and I think that's ultimately the issue. Some points on this specific agenda for tonight on gender inclusive language. I hope that you support that and take the easy steps and the hard steps to work towards gender inclusivity. Also, on the other point of city council member discussions on agenda, I would request and think it's reasonable to limit yourselves to four minutes at a time and out of consistency for our other input consideration to the public as well. Maybe you could do another round if people had more to say, but I think letting each person talk for up to four minutes at a time on the clock would be a consistent and good way to do it. That's all for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your input. The next person up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wasn't planning on speaking again because I thought I had all, I'd said all I wanted to say, but Mayor Marlin, after what you just said, I'm so angry. I just have to come back and say something. You want facts? I'm going to give you facts right now. These were your words. You said that a bullet went over the heads of bystanders and through the windows. To FOIA requests, to investigation, we cannot find any evidence of a bullet flying over the heads of bystanders. What have you got to say about this? Are you trying to change the narrative just to make things sound worse? Is this honesty? Secondly, this just happened recently. You said that 1,400 pages from the FOIA requests were printed out. That is a lie. There's no other way of putting it other than that is a lie. We have evidence, I have evidence that these documents were provided through a Dropbox. Not a single page was printed out. That is a lie. Thirdly, when you tried to justify Urbana's FOIA requests during all those presentations, superficial presentations that were provided by city attorney, yourself, the FOIA officer, you said that there were only two recurring requesters. This is not true. There have been more than two recurring requesters that are designated by the city, and there have been definitely more than two people who have been charged the exorbitant fees by the city of Urbana. So when you come up and tell the public that there's only two people, and these are the only two people that have been charged fees, you are not telling the truth to the public. And yet you dare come up here and tell the public and try to defend yourself when week after week this trend happens. It has to stop now. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your input. I believe we do not have anybody else. I'm sorry, Sarah Nixon is up.
Yes, thank you. This is Sarah Nixon. I actually did have a few points that I had hoped to cover in my previous comment, but I did run out of time. I wanted to echo what others articulated. For one thing, Christopher Hansen and others raised questions, others that include Alderman Miller have raised questions this evening about the mayor's appointee to the CPRB. We were left shaking our heads or scratching our heads. What, what are Mr. Rice's particular qualifications for this appointment? How is he or has he been engaged in issues and processes that would benefit the people of Urbana and warrant his appointment to a seat on this particular board? What background does he have of involvement and/or engagement with civilian complaints regarding law enforcement? I know that I and many others can think of numerous well-qualified applicants who also have the traits that the mayor pointed to in response to Alderman Miller. I recall the mayor saying he's open-minded. He's got, you know, experience managing diverse sort of populations, workplace populations. I mean, those are so vague as to be, again, questionable, that that kind of endorsement really applies to a great number of people, to the majority of people in management. The fact that Mr. Rice is African-American is noteworthy. However, I don't think that that in itself, I don't see how that in itself would be a factor that would require the mayor to appoint this person over others who are better qualified. Again, I can think of many applicants for this seat or potential applicants who are extremely well-qualified, who have the background, the passion, and the commitment to serve long-term, which is really important with the frequent turnover that we have seen with the CPRB. And, and who truly are ready to serve the people of Urbana. I also wanted to thank Ms. Jaya Colacetti for weighing in, speaking up about the one-door pilot program structure so far or structuring process so far. She covered points and concerns that I had wanted to touch on again, and most specifically with regard to domestic violence, family violence, child abuse. I know for a fact that the domestic violence community, the survivor community is wondering the same thing, same things, has the same questions that Ms. Colacetti raised. I also want to echo many of the things that Tracy Chong brought up, and specifically the issue of that incident involving the TASER, the police misconduct issue involving the TASER that was used in a domestic disturbance incident. People have brought this up again and again and again during public input, and I believe they will continue to do so. And, and I think it's shameful that there has been zero response, complete indifference from city leadership and administration to this really important concern.
All right, thank you for your input, Sarah. The next person is Emily Close.
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Emily Close. I live in Champaign. Mayor Marlin, losing your cool and schooling the citizens who pay you, pay your salary is not a good look for you. I'm embarrassed for you. I very much look forward to the next election because I believe it's time for another mayor and some new blood on the council. This is our time to speak, whether you like us or not, whether you want to listen to us or not. This is our time. This is our platform. That's all. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your input. All right, I don't see anybody else who has raised their hands. That closes public input for this time. The next item on the agenda is staff report. Are there any staff reports? The only person I see is Diane, so I'm assuming everybody else is not going to give a report since their, their videos aren't on. Okay, we have two items for discussion tonight. The first item is a resolution regarding the implementation of gender inclusive language in official written and verbal communication by the city of Urbana. And this was brought to us by council member Miller and Roberts.
Thanks. We did some good discussion on this last week. There were some follow-ups on it. I did offer some changes in the language to simplify things and help make it easier to understand throughout. I hope those were agreeable to everybody. I don't know, Mayor Ellis, if you'd received my email. I did respond to the question you had sent. I'm still open to that change if you, if you feel strongly about, about it. If, if that's there, but I didn't see anything else from anybody else, but I'm happy to continue discussion if anybody's got any questions for me about language that's in it or where we go from here.
So I have some comments. I'm wondering if I need to pass the chair in order to comment, or since this is just a discussion item and we're not voting on it, if I can keep the chair. Don't know if our parliamentarian is around. Well, I'm just going to move forward to some questions. Hopefully that's okay with everybody. Bill Brand had a really good idea because MUNICODE are the people who keep our code up to date. So I did reach out to them today, and they said that they do have a, a program that would update our code and go through it with editors to make sure that our language is gender neutral. In addition, they sent me a document just today about what that entails. There is a, there is a cost associated with it, and that cost for the code review and creation of gender neutral report, a one-time cost of $4,500. And then they also have an option of implementation of gender neutral vision revisions via supplemental supplementation one time, which is $3,000. So I just wanted to provide that information to council. The reason that I suggested that the, that we tweak a little bit of under the therefore with the section one, I basically included the word that we would work towards the incorporation of gender neutral language. My rationale for doing that was because we didn't know exactly how we were going to achieve this. Were we going to achieve it with a one overhaul of the code and hire, hire this company to do that for us? Or were we going to update it as code comes up for, for us to, to update? So that's the reason that I put that in there. I'm certainly not married to it, but I wanted to give us a little bit of flexibility so that we would have different ways of moving forward. Thoughts from anybody else? Jared?
I mean, if the city was amenable to the, to the expense, I certainly would support it. And if we're going to do it more piece by piece, if that's the way it works too. And I did mention, I don't know if there is a legal aspect to doing that update. Did MUNICODE in their response mention anything about any problems with doing those language swaps, that that would be any kind of, if we have to follow some order to change terms, or they feel, did they say anything about that, Mayor Ellis?
I'll send the whole thing to city council so that you can take a look at it. They just sent it to me today, and I didn't catch it before the meeting. Dennis?
Yeah, it would be beneficial, I think, for myself and for others to get examples of the kinds of locations that the gendered specific language would be changed. Are we talking about references of he or she or him to citizens? You know, community members, are we, are we doing those kinds of changes? You know, besides, you know, groups being they, what are we doing for like specific references to alder, alderpersons? Things like that. Aldermen, are we still, are we still considering using alderman, alderwoman? Or it'd be interesting just to see what exactly the changes are going to be. We have the concept. We don't have specifics, so I thought it'd be interesting to share that with the community.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, thanks for looking into that. I think as far as paying for it goes, I mean, none of us have used our travel budgets this year, and we aren't likely to. So there is extra money we could probably transfer from council travel, which I think we're each budgeted $1,000 or something around that neighborhood. So that would probably cover it if we're looking for money for that. They may need some kind of guide as far as a style guide or something goes. Did you, did you happen to provide a link to the UN page that we talked about that had kind of direction? There's just multiple ways to rearrange it. We, we obviously don't want them just to switch he to he, he, her, or he, she, because we already have that in a lot of places. Go and get rid of all that and either make it they or use a noun or rephrase it so that you don't have to refer to the individual at all. So, I mean, they're probably experienced, know that. So if we could get a little bit more information, maybe that's provided in what they sent you and how, what kind of changes they would make and how complete it would be. We switched to using council member in the minutes four or five years ago. I know when I passed my petitions, I use alderpersons. I think someplace, someplace in the code, it does say that all these terms are equivalent and can be used interchangeably, but it might be a good idea to get rid of aldermen.
Are we legally allowed to do that since according to the state statute, we are aldermen?
Yeah, that's, that's a question. I don't know. As far as the resolution goes, I don't think, I don't think any of that would, I don't think the resolution excludes any of that. A lot of that's just implementation details, right?
Diane?
I was going to just say, once, if this is passed, we can get that information for you. You also want to think about perhaps some funding for training, because this is going to take some training, I think, for all of us, staff, boards and commissions, council members, and actually members of the public. I think it'd be good to include somehow, make it a public, a public, inclusive of the public as well. So, so cost of changing the code, and then we'll see what perhaps some training might cost as well.
I know that Carol was kind enough to share some slides that Bridget went to, I think it was Bridget, about gender inclusive language. And I don't know if they would be willing to do some kind of training or And I don't know if they would be willing to do some kind of training or presentation since they already have a presentation developed. Carol, do you have any feel for the group of people that put that on?
I know that Bridget had reached out to them to ask them if we could do our own internal training using their slides. This is a little bit more, I mean, that was more of a sensitivity thing, and this resolution would raise the bar considerably. And it would also expand it to include, I don't know that we were actually thinking about doing boards and commission members, although we should have been thinking that. And I think there are some folks here locally that we might be able to tap into as well that have more experience with this. So since I'm engaged on this, I think, you know, what would be really useful, if you're open to it, is building into, as the mayor mentioned, not only money for training, but anticipating in the wording of the resolution that we need time. You know, this sort of, you know, just makes a change and suggests that this can all kind of turn on a dime, and it really can't. So building in some sense that this is something that we'll work towards, you know, over the next year because, you know, we won't change the code, you know, instantaneously, and we won't change staff practices instantaneously. And it will take time for people to adopt these new practices and work them into our correspondence and, you know, in the way we address people. And we'll make mistakes, and we hope people know we're coming from a good place.
And Carol, to that point, which is why I kind of added in that working towards inclusion, gender-neutral inclusion, just so that we would have a little bit of time to figure out all these details that you're talking about and not say that basically, and I don't think that was Jared's intent anyway, that we were going to pass this resolution that was going to magically all change. There's details that have to be figured out and training that has to be done. So that was my rationale for putting that in.
Yeah, I think that's great. It's just to, you know, if the public picks up a document and they look at the document, they don't necessarily have all the dialogue around it. So it's helpful just to build in the sense that this is, you know, this is something that we'll work towards.
Phil Culbroke?
Carol, to your point, do you have any sense of how much time the city needs to build in this language to all the different places that you just talked about?
Well, the specific, you know, there's places that are called out specifically, like the city code, but, you know, we have a lot of policies that, you know, we don't have the capacity. It's not all housed in MuniCode and so forth, and those will change over time. We don't have the resources to go back and revise all of our policies to use this kind of language. But it's also just in the emails that we send to people. It's in, you know, just addressing a letter to someone. We have to think about how we articulate, you know, there's these norms around salutations and what constitutes respectful language, and that's now changing, and we need to learn a new language. So I don't really know. But we have a lot of policies and we have a lot of correspondence. So we'll have to reach, you know, we have to reach down. We have forms that we have to go back through and make sure that those are revised to be gender-neutral. So this will take time.
So you see it more as an open-ended work in progress as opposed to we will accomplish this goal by such and such a day?
Yeah, I mean, what I would see happening is perhaps, you know, and shortly after this is accomplished, that you pass this resolution, that we would at least ask the departments to audit the materials that they have and have a sense of, okay, certain departments probably can come into compliance more quickly because they don't have as many policies or forms or whatever. And certain things can change, you know, more quickly, like the way that we correspond with people. But some departments might have, you know, might have a lot of things they need to change. I just, at the moment, I don't know.
Thank you.
Jared?
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I don't think it was Julie's intention, nor mine, nor Dennis's, that this was supposed to be something that was slapdash done. So certainly, whatever language we propose, I think the intention of the of this is clear enough that, Carol, perhaps if you and I work on time and/or if we need to include language about financial commitment in some broad sense to help make it clear that, you know, I think eventually that would just have to be a budget amendment because it's not something we're currently budgeting for. But if you and I want to work on that, I think it would be able to, we'd be able to clean this up and have it ready to at least come to the regular committee next time as a voteable action item.
Absolutely, and maybe what we could do is just in, not in the resolution itself, but in the memo, have a plan, right? What's our plan to move this forward? And so where's the money going to come from? How much? You know, we clearly already internally had the intent to move in this direction. This is going to give us some momentum to do it, and it'll broaden the effort. But, so yeah, I think if we can just map out a plan, that would be useful.
Okay, great.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, moving on to the second discussion of the evening, which is the addition of council input agenda item and reordering of the regular agenda. And this is also from, Jen, sorry, from Jared and from Dennis.
All right, so we didn't get to discuss this at the last committee meeting, but because it's mostly based for us, and we've already kind of touched around it, I don't have any long, foreboding details. And I know that everybody's going to have opinions about what we're doing with this because it has rules to do with how we hold our meetings and how we hold discussion at the meeting. Just briefly, for the public's knowledge, it has been brought up during public input numerous times over a long time. Ebs and flows certainly where people are asking to get more. We certainly did more traditionally response, even though it was still sparse in our in-person meetings than we did in our virtual meetings. But there has been, you know, since we've gone virtual, there's been little to no response from council or chances for council to make comments on public comment as it has come up or to bring up things that council members have concerns about other than through adding a discussion item to a committee of the whole agenda. Even though I know it is allowed for us to ask through parliamentary procedure to discuss things, I thought that it was more appropriate, and Dennis agreed, that we adopt something more formal than just, you know, we know that we can do it, but we don't really do it, to make the intention known to the public that we do want to be proactive in helping shape what happens at the city. So that was the intention of these. There were two of them. There was one resolution to change the order of the meeting and one that added, or I guess it's just the one document, that added the additional rule, which Dennis and I worked on. And then that rule being inserted would thus, according to the rules in it, change the order of the meetings because in order to be able to add the item, we would need to add the item to the actual order of the meetings. So there's two. One resolution and one ordinance that go along with this discussion. I know council members probably all have something to say about what we initially proposed. So I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts.
Sorry, Diane?
Just a note on process before you begin the discussion. What you have tonight in front of you is what was proposed by the council members. And then when, if it comes back as an action item on the agenda, Carol Mitten has been working on, with legal, on producing the strike-through underlined language that will show you in the public exactly what the current language of the amendment of the ordinances and what the proposed changes are, which is what you're not seeing here tonight. But what you'll vote on will be the underlined strike-through that details every single word that's being changed by this proposal.
I did my best to try and.
You did. I mean, it's a good beginning, and it's a good basis for discussion. And then, but in order to vote on it, we have to have that in legal format to do that.
And this is just for discussion for us.
Absolutely.
Dennis?
Yeah, so I support, you know, this direction too. In the past, we've had more interaction when we were in chamber, which was a great thing. And we were able to respond and bounce off thoughts of each other in more organic way. But as far as, you know, replying or when the public would speak, it was very customary for us to ask clarifying questions if we had them. We've kind of dropped that. It seemed like that was part of the warp and woof of the public comment that there was a chance to get clarification from the presenter or the individual speaking if there was a question. But it was not to actually begin to have a discussion on the topic that the person mentioned or to create a debate between the public, the member of the public and the alderperson. So this allows everybody to have the opportunity to make comment in general about anything that's come up or even something that is on your mind that you would like to preach for briefly at this time. Sometimes, you know, we can also make announcements, you would call them announcements, of events or related incidences that are related to our civic obligations during reports of special committees, if you happen to be connected to a special committee or something like that. But, and I think that Jared and I had pretty much agreed that as we give the individuals who are speaking to us four minutes, which was an accommodation to try to retain a certain amount of openness while keeping the meetings shorter, that the city council members who would make opportunities to make these comments during the proposed adjustment to the agenda would also just keep to four minutes and not make it into a long speech. So brevity can be fine. You can make a couple of comments about your impression or what you would like to see happening relating to the topic, you know, maybe for, and if you have a lot more to say, then the appropriate thing would be to put that onto the next agenda of the committee of the whole or whatever as a discussion topic.
Phil Culbroke?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, but here's my problem with all of this is, and I mentioned this the last meeting, we need to go on a diet. You know, our meetings are going up to the 11 o'clock hour with very, very stacked agendas. And we go on and on and on and on and on about the most mundane topics. I think a lot of the questions that we ask, and I'll throw myself in as part of this, you know, a lot of the questions that we ask can be solved by reading the briefing materials, can be solved by perhaps making a phone call or an email to a staff member and finding out some of those questions ahead of time. Under these proposed rules, you know, we limit the public to four minutes. And under B, council members are limited to four minutes for comments announcements. Well, then it says right here in C that each council member shall be limited to speaking only once to all the others who have had an opportunity to speak. So all that says is they can cycle back around a second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth time, and that's why our meetings are going till 11 o'clock. I will once again bring up the example of Bloomington. When there is an agenda item, they put a limit. They put a limit on the amount of time it takes to give a presentation, perhaps five minutes, perhaps 10 minutes. And they also put a limit on the amount of council discussion. So maybe the presentation is five minutes total, and maybe the council discussion is 15 minutes total. And if a couple of council members kind of dominate the time, that means other council members don't get to speak. I think we need to go on a diet. I think we need to somehow curtail our discussion per agenda item in a way that's efficient, is meaningful, but we just don't go on and on and on and on. Because what we're doing is we're proposing to add yet another speaking portion for all of us council members. And we're going to be voting at 11 o'clock to extend to 11:30. We're going to be voting 11:30 to go to midnight. And I just think that is inefficient use of time. Thanks.
So my thought on this is I'm supportive of the general concept of having council comments. I hear Bill Culbroke's concern about the evolution of those comments being continuous. So I would like to say that C be struck. If there's a conversation amongst city council members, then maybe that needs to be an actual discussion item on an agenda rather than having a discussion go around and around. I would also like to suggest that council members are limited to two minutes. And finally, I would like to suggest that the council comments come at the end of the meeting. And my reason for that is that oftentimes there are questions that come up during during public input that are answered by the presentation, that are answered throughout our discussion. And so I think that that would save some time in terms of making this as smooth as possible. So those are my three ideas. Phil Brown?
Yeah, I would also support getting rid of item C. I think one time around should be enough for everyone. It's not a discussion item. It's just an opportunity to respond or make comments and announcements. Also, in items E, about adding things to future agenda, we already have a process. It only takes two council members, I think, to add an agenda item. So I don't know if we need, it just seems like you're encouraging more discussion by including item E in there, something else to talk about. If after the comments, two council members think that there has been interest expressed in a future agenda item, they could just do it, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, either council meeting or committee of the whole. I think it only takes one person actually for committee of the whole. So yeah, that's my general comments. I don't have a strong preference for having it right after public input or at the end. I'm open to either one.
Jared?
Just, it'll probably come out during the, when you redo the strike-out version, but rule four and five have the same heading, debate limits. I think rule five used to say something like draft resolutions and ordinances or something like that, but that'll probably get fixed.
Jared?
Yeah, I think actually in the previous one, I had pulled the wrong thing. Rule four didn't actually exist. The one that I changed from three to four did, but the one that I included four was actually not in there. So I know when Carol sent me back an initial edit of it, that that was eliminated, so that five was five and not changing from five to six. Just to give some clarity to the intention of C and E in doing this, I just, I try to envision how our conversations generally go. And it's very often that if somebody says, if one of us says something that gives the other person, you know, an immediate raise of concern or they really want to say something in response to that, I didn't want to eliminate the chance for at least a simple response and from somebody. You know, if somebody says something and another council member feels very strongly about responding to whatever that person said, I didn't want to eliminate the chance for them to do that just because that person has already gone, and now you're done. You know, you went first, that other person said something, and now you want to respond to it, but we've taken that ability away from you to do that. I didn't necessarily want to make it that way, so that's why I put that in there. But I didn't want, because I know how easily, as Bill mentioned, that, you know, we could end up going in circles.
Bill mentioned that, you know, we could end up going in circles and it just turns into a, you know, it turns into a discussion item. I know the intention of doing this isn't to create a lengthy discussion, which is why I included E as basically a method for the chair to police the conversation and see, you know, if council members are going back and forth about this, you know, more than once or twice without needing to like necessarily spell out, well, if it receives one response, then ask for this, but basically for the chair to police that conversation and say, it looks like we're getting some back and forth on this. Does somebody want to make a motion to add a discussion item to a following agenda on this topic? And try to end whatever may be going on in conversation during this. I mean, it, it's, it's just an idea. I certainly, you know, I understand trepidation people have about that, but I just, I didn't want to take away the ability for somebody to respond to a comment that, that may have been made or, you know, if I, I happen to be the first person to raise my hand and, you know, maybe only Eric has something else to say about it, but he brings up a really good point. And I just want to, you know, add something to that very quickly. I didn't want to take that away. So that's, that's why I didn't initially, well, Dennis and I didn't initially just say, you get one time and that's, and that's it. That's, that's why we put those in there. Oh, and just one last thought before you guys give me your thoughts on that. Bill, I, I totally hear you on, you know, taking too long on agenda items. Sometimes I'm, I'm certainly not against, I mean, we, we don't, we do not follow our, our own rules almost ever on, you know, two responses and no more than three minutes each on any given thing. And I don't think anybody's, we've ever done that since I've been on council. Maybe, maybe once or twice Charlie gave us a really hard time about, about that stuff, but I understand that and I, and I certainly don't intend to try and make our, our meetings egregiously long every time by adding, adding this minute. And we do need to be better about limiting debate on, on, on certain items. So I tried to instill some rules in there to keep it under control and to not let it, not let it get out of hand. That was the, that was the intention of C and E. But I'm, I'm, I'm open to ideas, whatever, whatever people think is best. And I'll, I have comments for Mary Alice's thing, but I'd like to see what people think about if, you know, that's worth keeping or if we need to think about it differently. I mean, if it's one time, it's got to be one time, whatever that, that is what it is. But that's the intention of, of C and E, the way that Dennis and I wrote it.
Bill?
I think there is a, some kind of parliamentary rule that if someone uses your name in debate, you, you get a chance to respond. So if someone actually did say, you know, Bill Brown said this in their comment, then I could, I would have the right to respond to that. But it sounds like what you're saying is that you might, somebody might want to just add on to somebody else's comment. Yeah, I don't know. I think we did be safer just to save one round, but I don't know.
Dennis?
Yeah, so I could, I can appreciate that. You know, coming back for a second, a second segment of discussion is maybe kind of more fluid than we need. The intent was just, just to make a comment so that people understand that we're listening or that we've thought about it or that future conversation will occur at a future time. So, you know, you, you were suggesting two minutes for the conversations to be, you know, we were saying four minutes because maybe, maybe, maybe if we just took each three minutes in, on these replies because they're supposed to be brief and succinct. We're supposed to be able to, to pull our thoughts together in a more concise way than to wander. And we're not trying to fill up the four minutes like some individuals do during public comment. So maybe three minutes and then if you have any more to say, you're going to want to say it during a conversation at another meeting or, or develop your thought and bring something more concise. So I would say, you know, I wouldn't go down to two minutes. That's pretty brief. But, you know, if you want to say three minutes per person, three times seven is 21. That's almost half an hour.
Jared?
I, I'd be minimal to three minutes to Mary Alice. I, I agree with Dennis. I think we just went with four because that's what we have public input at. But yeah, I think we can be even more concise and thought out if we're planning on saying something or reacting to something. We, we all should be certainly. I think two's too short, but I would be open to three for sure.
I, I mean, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And certainly not everybody's going to want to speak at every meeting. I, I do watch city council meetings from Champaign and occasionally there'll be one or two people at city council who will have a comment, but not those, certainly the whole, the whole city council doesn't comment every single time when it's on the agenda. So I can appreciate that it, at max, it should take around 21 minutes, 25 minutes, give or take. And I understand the, the thought that having the ability to respond quickly if somebody says something that you think is not quite right or you strongly disagree with, I'm just trying to figure out how to incorporate that so that it doesn't become that round and round going back and forth. Because I do think that, I mean, the option there is, well, this is a broader conversation. So perhaps having a minute and now you're up to four minutes. One minute, somebody can respond if they want to respond. Otherwise, you know, we move on. That might be an option to keep that to a minimum. Dennis?
And if the item is actually on the agenda and people are speaking to something that's going to be discussed later on, that should also alleviate some kind of conversation during this topic period. Because we can always, you know, make comments and address questions that come up if the topic's on the agenda, which is going to follow this, this section.
Right, right, right. So we can address those items on the agenda themselves.
Yes.
Bill Brown? Sorry, Bill Culver?
Jared, I appreciate your comments from earlier and I, and since I invoked your name, it's going to give you a chance to respond. But I just think that you make a good point that if we have a rule that we're supposed to follow, we should be following them. You know, we, we have asked a lot of the citizens of Urbana and the surrounding communities to limit their comments to four minutes. And we've made kind of a big deal of that. I think at minimum, what we should be doing as a council is be following our own rules. So if, for whatever reason, we as a council have gotten away from our own rules and things have gotten kind of lengthy, we need to reread this section and, and kind of limit our comments and be a little bit more efficient in our comments. So we're at least following our own rules.
Jared?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that at all. And, you know, if I, I often wondered that when I got on council, how, how it would go, having known that and having had Charlie Smythe pointed out to me. Because Charlie was always somebody who, who that bugged him that we didn't follow that, follow that rule enough. But one, one other thing that I'd like to get clarification from folks on, I know Bill Brown said he didn't really feel strongly one way or the other. And Eric, we haven't heard from you yet, so you should chime in. It's about placement on the agenda. I still feel strongly that this should come after public input rather than at the end of the agenda because, you know, I think the primary intention of this, at least from Dennis and I's perspective, is that, you know, we are recognizing and engaging as much as, you know, we can in a reasonable sense without entering open debate with people who've made public comment. I think that was his intention in supporting this initially and certainly is my, you know, I, I see the importance of that. I think it's also important for council members to be able to bring up issues, but I think that's secondary to being able to in, you know, I hate using the phrase engage because it's not really engagement, but a recognition of an issue that may be brought up. And, you know, when we've got complex agendas, you know, we've gone through 10 other things. You know, none of us may even remember that somebody said something we wanted to comment on by the end of the meeting. And so I, I, I still feel strongly that it needs to come directly after public, public input. Because it can also set the tone for how we approach things as the meeting goes along as well. Reacting at the end of the, reacting at the end of the meeting and oftentimes as our meetings have been that, you know, we run out of time. We're, I, I just feel like we're going to find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we get to that point and it's like, well, now I get the chance to say something. But it's 10:58 and I've got to, you know, it's got two minutes and we can't even get in, we can't even get into it. So anyway, that's just my thought on that as far as placement is concerned.
Eric?
So I, you know, I obviously am new, so I'm just listening to this conversation mostly, but the question in my mind is what is the problem we're really trying to solve? And, you know, Jared spoke to that a little bit, but I believe Dennis mentioned that in the past it was more common for council persons to reply or give their comments about a public comment in more real time. And I'm wondering why, what's changed? Is it because people have chosen for whatever reason not to make comments as frequently? In which case maybe this doesn't really solve that problem? Or is it something about the online format? I'm a little confused about why, why this is going to solve the problem? And what exactly has caused the problem? If people have thoughts on that.
So I would just want to jump in here for a second because early on, when I, in my tenure, when I was running committee of the whole, I remember having somebody come up and, you know, council members had questions and Dennis, you called point of order on me. And you said, public input is not a time for questioning the person or giving our comment. Public input is a time for us to listen to the public. And so I followed that rule after, after that point of order was called on me. Now, to say that other people didn't follow the rule, but it, it of course happened. But the intent of public input was to allow public to provide input to us. That, that was my, what was what explained to me in the beginning. Jared?
And Eric, you know, that, that was the, the, the crux of it and it is in our, in our rules, if you haven't gotten in there. And dealt into that, there's that great PDF that Charlie put together before his departure from city clerk on, you know, how our rules are kind of set out and, you know, what we're, what we're supposed to do. And there, you know, it is in our rules that were, you know, that nothing in these rules shall stop a council member from engaging, you know, in questions of a, a person, you know, who's giving a presentation or city staff. Or, you know, any member or especially any member, you know, who's given input during public input. However, the, I, I think the intention of that part of our rules has kind of gotten washed away in, you know, the, the era of COVID and how we're handling meetings now. And even at the time, it was always kind of foggy, you know, how that really was supposed to be implied, what's supposed to be applied during meetings. It was never really quite clear. You know, it always felt kind of awkward if you raised your hand to ask somebody a question after they gave public input and try and, and follow up with them. And sometimes it didn't. Sometimes people were there because most time people give public input and they immediately get up and walk away. You know, they would, they would get up, go back to their seat, which kind of signals to you that they're, they're done engaging with you. And we didn't make it really obvious to them that, well, we do have a process to like continue to ask questions. And didn't really educate the public on that. And I think that, you know, it probably in hindsight, if I had been more proactive about it, I would have, you know, as when I was leading committee meetings, been the person who said, look, members of the public, when you guys give public input, stick around. Ask if council members have any questions for you because we're allowed to ask you questions. It's in our rules. We, and we just got so far away from that to where we are now that, you know, I, I think that we've gone to the, to the other end of like public input is for public input. And we don't engage in conversation with them, even though that's still not what our current rules say. And this, I felt like was an action to kind of bring the spirit of that back in a more cohesive, in a more cohesive way to help us be able to engage, even though it's not, you know, ask questions of the public. This is a response which isn't illuminated in our rules. Our rules don't say respond to the public. They say ask questions of city staff, mayor, city leadership, whatever. So there isn't anything in our rules currently that asks for responses or allows for responses or comments on things that are not specifically on the agenda as far as the way that I read our rules. And that's kind of why I wanted to bring that in there.
Diane? You're muted.
A little more historical perspective. When I joined the city council in 2009, I was trained, if you will, in similar to what Mary Alice said, is that we, public input was for listening to the public and in the in-person meetings, people could, public could speak up to five minutes. And there was up to two hours of public input per meeting. So if you added to that back and forth between the council members are asking questions and, and entering into a discussion during public input. Time went by very quickly. So we were told, and that's how we conducted most meetings was this is when we listened and the public spoke. So, and, and you're right, we didn't always follow the rules that were there and the rules have changed over the years as well. But, but that is the understanding that I had when I was brought onto the council back in 2009.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'll try to make this my last entry on this conversation. So what we found, I, what I observed was that there was a difference between somebody asking a question for clarity. And then somebody wanting to like make a comment, which ended up being kind of philosophical or became a dialogue following somebody's input. And that's the kind of thing that we were trying to eliminate from getting into because then it could wander off into a 10 minute ramble. You know, of thoughts and ideas that were spurned by, that were initiated from that public input. But it, it was actually losing the focus of the, even, even the input actually to some degree. So that's kind of where we started saying, well, listen, no dialoguing, but listen and appreciate. And it seemed to me if you had a question, you, you could still ask for clarity. But it wasn't a time to start, you know, having a dialogue, a discourse. That's all.
And, and perhaps that is the, what the intent here is as well.
Yes.
Yeah, pretty much. Bill Culver?
As far as the order, I can appreciate the thought that if we put it right behind public input, that that allows for more of a real time of back and forth. However, if we put it there, then we will be taking critical votes at 10:58 PM. If we put this addition to the agenda on, at, at the end of the agenda, it incentivizes us early on in the meeting to efficiently go through our agenda items. Not short change, but just efficiently get through them because we, we do have to take the votes. We do have to have the critical discussion on those agenda items, but we can efficiently get through those items. So then we can get to some of the discussion items at the end that we're trying to add. I think it needs to be at the end.
Jared, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just want to see what people's thoughts are, just so we can wrap, wrap this up as efficiently as possible. So we had three from what I, because I'd really like to see this actually come as a, as a real agenda, voteable action item and not stay in discussions. So I think if we can get some clarity on a couple of things with them already working on the ordinance language, that we can get these things adjusted as possible. So we obviously have two different stances on where it goes. I don't know that we're gonna, I, I think we're going to have enough people voting in favor of the idea that it's going to go forward. So we need to resolve these last couple, these last things. We have different stances on where it goes at the end or where, where it's proposed. So I think we all need to make it clear where we think that. or where, where it's proposed. So I think we all need to make it clear where we think that stands. Because, you know, if that's controversial enough that if it's in one way or the other and it's not going to pass because of that, then we need to come to a resolution on that. And then we also need to resolve C and E. Are they appropriate as, as mentioned? Or do we need to clarify one or the other, eliminate one or the other? Where, where, where do people really want to put their foot down on that? Let's, let's make some decisions. That's all I was going to say.
Bill Brown?
I guess I'd say if, if we take out C and E, I'd be okay with putting it after the public input. If we leave in C and E, I want it at the end of the meeting. And E, I'm not sure if we can actually make a motion and vote on it. If it's not on the agenda, that sounds kind of like final action. But if it's, you know, if it's agreement to put something on, on a following agenda, it might be maybe not a motion, but just, you know, I don't, we don't usually make motions and approve motions if they aren't on the agenda because that's considered final action unless it's like staff direction. But so E might need a little bit of work if you're going to leave it in there. But if you leave it in there, I think all that should go at the end. But if you take those out and we can make it efficient, I wouldn't, I would probably favor putting it after public input.
Dennis, Eric, what are you guys thoughts?
Yeah, I can do it. Oh, sure, great.
Dennis?
All right. So I'd go with three minutes max. I could almost see now two minutes from the concerns that have been brought up. But all right, three minutes max and keep it after public input. I think if it's at the end of the meeting, the reply will be kind of pointless by then or diffused. And yeah, we're, we're going to be too tired. It's, it's not a time where hardly anybody's listening anymore. So a lot of the audience will have stopped watching Zoom. So at this time, I'm with the following, following public input, but before staff report.
Eric?
I, I think the council meetings have to focus on the business of the, of the meeting, which is voting on the resolutions. And so I think I agree with Bill Colbrook that at least for the council meetings, they should go at the end. That the, the comments, we might try it right after public comments for the Committee of the Whole. I guess we could try these out and they could always be revised if it doesn't seem to work very well.
So my, my thought is that I feel like we should get rid of E and I feel like we should allow one person to comment for no more than a minute if they want to respond to what somebody said. That gives you a little bit of time, but also it shows you if there's multiple people who want to comment, then those people can say, okay, this is a broader conversation that we need to have at an official meeting. So that would be tweaking number C. I, I do feel pretty strongly that it should come at the end of the meeting for the reasons that I, I, one of the reasons I think is because we do get questions about item, agenda items that I think can be answered during the course of the meeting. So that, that's just my take. Jared?
Would you be amenable to leaving it in committee meetings after public input and at the end at council meetings? Because I, I'm not disagreeable to that.
I, I actually think it should be reverse.
I actually thought the same thing, that maybe it would should be the, maybe it should be the opposite because we're discussing.
Because committee meetings are pretty long.
Right.
And that's where the major discussion points happen. So I would be amenable to trying that out and having city council be right after public input and having Committee of the Whole be at the end. Eric, are you okay with that? All right. Any final comments? Diane?
Could you clarify, Mary Alice, again, what you wanted to do to see, to make sure I understand?
So, let's see here. C would be if a council member wishes to respond to a previous council member's comment. They have up to one minute to do so.
Okay, so they can speak for three minutes and then they get a one-minute response if desired?
If desired.
Okay.
That bring you back up to your four, so. Jared?
Even though it was mentioned if it's controversial, I mean, I think a 30-second response is, is more than enough personally. If you want to make a response, you know, it needs to be something quick just because intention is not to involve conversation and I, and I'm fine, you know, with Bill Colbrook's suggestions that we try and be as efficient as possible. I'd be okay with 30 seconds if other people would as well. I mean, it's just time for like a quick something and then, you know, shut up and let's move on.
I agree.
Okay, I'll do that too.
All right. So the next step in this is to make a few alterations based on the discussion tonight. And then it goes to legal to ensure that we have all of our cheese crossed and our eyes dotted. And then at some point it'll come back to the Committee of the Whole. I believe that's kind of the order of operations. Okay, this is your final chance to put a, to give comment on this because this is the last item on our agenda. Okay, well, with, oh, Jared.
Diane, did you catch, can we just get to do a quick summary of everything you've got on there for adjustments?
And I'll be conferring with Carol Mitten and the city and Phyllis Clark as well. But we have, council members will be limited to three minutes for comments and announcements. If they wish to respond, they'll get up to 30 seconds to make a response one time. Actually, it's not clear what you wanted to do with E. You leaving it in or striking that?
I think we should strike it.
Straw poll?
I think that's fine. I, I don't think it's necessary.
Strike it? All right. And then the council or the council member comments come immediately after public input at city council meetings and at the end of the meeting for committee meetings. And then rule number five is going to be titled draft resolutions rather than debate limits. And then again, we'll come back with a strike through, underlined legal version of this.
All right, great. All right, with no further business in front of this Committee of the Whole, this meeting has been adjourned. Thank you.